Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. If we could get a determination of a quorum, please.
Yes. Sarah Savilecik?
Here.
Francie Doncic?
Here.
Michael Flick did indicate that he would not be able to join us tonight. Daniel Lazaruski?
Here.
Kate Nelson?
Here.
Rob Pierce?
Here.
Pat Phillips?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And before I go any further, I just want to remind everyone, this meeting is being held in the commission chambers and via webinar via Zoom. To participate via Zoom, please log into Zoom webinar at the following link, HTTPS: backslash backslash US02WEB dot zoom dot US backslash J backslash eight four two seven two six five nine four oh six. And the meeting ID number is eight four two seven two six five nine four oh six. Or you can join via phone by dialing one six six nine nine hundred ninety one twenty eight, and again, entering the meeting ID and pressing pound. Thank you. Ms. Savilecik, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. You continue to comply with your pledge of allegiance under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gussman, if we could get the ethics law announcement, please?
Um, commissioners are reminded that if you respect any matter of any person coming before the commission today, if you receive a gift or loan, if you have a community interest, if you have a commitment in a private capacity such as family, employment, business, or similar relationships, or if you provided representation or counseling-
Before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here tonight, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please remember to abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Our commissioners are also reminded that under the planning commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today on a matter that's being considered, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gussman. Secretary Lloyd, if we could get the appeal procedure, please?
Yes. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at three two eight six one zero zero for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Next is public comment, and again, comment under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the agenda. However, action may not be taken on any matter raised during this public comment period until the matter is specifically listed on an agenda as an action item. Comments are to be made to the Planning Commission as a whole. Ladies, do we have any public comment either in-house or via Zoom at this time?
Yes, I have Mark Newman.
For the record, Charles Mark Newman. I go by Mark. I am presently here on the board for our HOA at Highland Ranch in Sun Valley. I also serve on the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board. And at the last commissioners' meeting, I was appointed to be an alternate on the Senior Services Citizens Advisory Board for Washoe County. I'm here speaking for no group tonight, just speaking as a citizen of Washoe County. Now, we, as you guys all know, it goes when we do a development, they first have a community meeting with everybody within the community that's going to be affected by the development. And they all hash back and forth, we all do it. And the developer comes up with something, and the community comes up with something. Then it goes and hashes around a little bit. If their cab is able to meet, we go through the cab meeting. As in Sun Valley, we have a general improvement district, which I'm on the ballot for that as well. But then we go in front of you guys, and you guys all go yes and hee-ho around, and we all come up with something. And then it goes to the county commissioners, and they stamp their approval on it. Eventually, the developer comes back and say, as in the point that I'm trying to make tonight, of Highland Village, originally at midnight in Highland Ranch Road, Highland Village was supposed to be 3.6 units per acre, instead of we went above and beyond the whole master plan of Sun Valley, which was originally, as of Highland Ranch, three units per acre. And we gave them a little bit, little bit more because of the price of property and the price of houses. It went through, and it was approved by Washoe County Commissioners. Then they come back later, it doesn't have to go through any of that process anymore. The developer says, oh, we want to take out that, we want to put 4.5 houses per acre now. And the county commissioners all go, yeah, that sounds good. But none of us had any voice in any of the changes. When we all agreed on something to begin with, all went out the window. And even the master plan that all of us as taxpayers pay for, and we're paying for the envisioned's 2040 master plan, but if a developer from wherever decides that they don't want to go with the master plan, it all just gets thrown out the window. I'd like you guys all to think about it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ladies, any more public comment at this time?
I have no further public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Then we will close public comment and bring it to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the September 6th, 2022.
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Vice Chair Savilecik.
We move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a primary and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the August 2nd, 2022 draft minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Lazaruski, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a first. Do we have a second?
This is Rob for the record. I second it.
At this time, do we have any discussion or corrections for the agenda? I mean, the minutes. All right, thank you. Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson abstain.
Oh, all right. And we abstain, thank you. Next item on there is item eight, is public hearings, item eight A. Secretary Lloyd, if you would, please?
Yeah, of course. Item eight A tonight is Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 21-0004 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 21-0003 for hearing, discussion, and possible action to, one, approve an amendment to the North Valleys Area Plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to redesignate the master plan designation from suburban residential to commercial on one parcel totaling 2.76 acres. And two, to initiate and recommend adoption of an amendment to the North Valleys Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone from medium-density suburban to neighborhood commercial office on one parcel totaling 2.76 acres. The Regulatory Zone Amendment is subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. And three, if approved, authorize the chair to sign resolutions to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Chris Bronzick.
Chris, one more thing before we start, just a quick question, are there any disclosures by commissioners, either ethics or ex parte at this time? Seeing none, thank you, Chris.
Good evening. Chris Bronzick, Washoe County Planning. We're looking at WMPA 21-4 and WRZA 21-3. This is for a master plan amendment and regulatory zone amendment for Mr. Brad Larson. Lacy?
There we go.
There we go. This is a master plan amendment to redesignate one parcel totaling 2.76 acres from suburban residential to commercial, and a regulatory zone amendment to also redesignate from medium-density suburban to neighborhood commercial on that same parcel. The subject parcel is located off of Buck Drive, to the north of Buck Drive and to the east of Lemon Drive. This is within the North Valleys Planning Area. It's located in close proximity to existing developed general commercial within Washoe County's planning jurisdiction and within close proximity to commercial developed within Reno's planning area. Before you is a side-by-side comparison of the existing and proposed master plan designation. To the left is the existing, and to the right is the proposal. Similarly, this is for the regulatory zone. To the left is the existing, to the right is the proposed. The purple designates neighborhood commercial regulatory zone. So the parcel currently has an existing single-family residence on the property. It is being used as a primary home for the applicant. The acreage for this parcel, being at 2.76 acres, you're looking at typical neighborhood-serving commercial use types. And to the south and west, you have existing more intense commercial uses. The neighborhood commercial on this subject property does allow for five dwellings per acre if pursued. That would be subject to a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. Sorry, I didn't hit up on one thing. The applicant did submit a feasibility study and a market analysis as part of the rezone process. The market analysis that was submitted did show significant need for additional commercial regulatory zones in the North Valleys Planning Area. Additionally, the feasibility study that was submitted by the applicant did show sufficient infrastructure for this proposal. It should be noted that neighborhood commercial does allow for less intense commercial uses and a significant variety of commercial uses than its adjacent general commercial properties. Before you is the regulatory zone compatibility. This is found within Washoe County's master plan land use matrix. Neighborhood commercial does have a low compatibility with medium-density suburban and low-density suburban, but a high compatibility with general commercial. What's effectively taking place with this rezone and master plan amendment, the compatibilities are switching. So instead of it being low compatibility to the south, it's now low compatibility to the north and east, high compatibility to the south and west. It's essentially a swamp. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on June 28th. No public showed up. Notices were sent to 65 parcels within 1,000 feet of the subject property. The master plan staff was able to make all five required findings for a master plan amendment as well as the two required North Valleys Area Plan findings, North Valleys Policy 21.1 and North Valleys Policy 21.3. The analysis for each finding can be found on pages 12 through 16 of the staff report. Similarly, staff was able to make all the required findings for the regulatory zone amendment. Those analysis of each finding can also be found on pages 12 through 16. Staff is recommending approval for both the proposed master plan amendment and the regulatory zone amendment. The motions for each can be found on page 16 and 18 of the staff report. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Is there any applicant presentation at this time? Before we go to questions?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's John Krimpodick. I'm representing Brad Larson. He's with me in the audience this evening. There we go. Thank you, Lacy. Is that Lacy doing that?
We should be good now.
We're good? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to try to not be duplicate to Chris's presentation. A lot of times, there's redundancy here. It's well-intended redundancy, but I don't want to be too wordy. I'm going to skip that because he introduced the master plan amendment and the regulatory, the technical piece of it. I would say in the third bullet point, the North Valleys Area Plan, there was, these requests are influenced by changes in the immediate area, and we'll get into that a little bit more now, zoned commercially. And also of note, there is no project at this time. Mr. Larson lives on the property. He intends to live there until something comes forward, if in fact this was supported by this planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. Just to give you a little more detail on the location in Arrowville, I think it defines it pretty well. You can see a lot going on adjacent to the property, to the west on Lemon Drive, also to the south of Buck, kind of a pretty significant commercial cluster in that area. There's the letter I wrote to the, it's funny how this process goes. This new process we have is, I think, extremely well-vetted with the communities and the neighborhood process we go through. And I wrote the letter, and we put together a presentation, rented the room at the school, and nobody showed up. That's the first time that's happened, so it was kind of odd, but it's okay. So just wanted to show that. And I think staff mentioned that there were 65 notices in the 1,000-foot radius. There is the side-by-side, as noted by Chris, the master plan existing and proposed from suburban res to commercial. And then the zoning that corresponds most similarly is from MDS as it currently exists to neighborhood commercial. A few notes on the rationale for the requested changes and some justification. The changing conditions, I think, in that first bullet point, the most important thing that could be made is that the character has changed dramatically with that six-lane arterial that's currently under construction with a traffic light that's programmed just to the north where Vista Knolls will intersect Lemon Drive. Land use compatibility, staff touched on as well, but there's the commercial that's bound on two sides, and then the residential on the east boundary. The approved policy change, we've been at this for 18 months now, when we first made inquiry with staff. And the reason being is that we had the character management area that actually had this designated as rural. So we went through that process, it was changed, and now allowed for this particular application to go forward with the commercial designation in the master plan and in the zoning. And then the last point I would make is on the favorable feasibility reports. We did do the market analysis done by EK, and the infrastructure analysis, which is the feasibility report, that looked at the major public utilities, sewer, water, storm drainage, and roadway capacity. That's, and all of those were shown to be either adequate, nearby the property, makes sense economically to serve this property where it sits relative to those existing One thing I wanted to touch on, because it's a little bit different here, is the access now. Actually, this is a better map. So you can see the Larson property. You see the legal access that stubbed the 20-foot access easement that comes in from Lemon and then wraps up to the north in the angle there. That's legal established access. And then a note on the east side is Cactus View. I'll go back one slide, but that is a 50-foot access easement that's the legal access to the property today. And so that just shows it in a different perspective where it meets that property line on the east side. We have also, I happen to know the gentleman who owns the properties to the south, just looking at, trying to really have a good network of access to the property. So we inquired, going through that, you could see, imagine either on the west side of the one parcel or the east side of the other, where it wouldn't be a big infringement on that, on either of those properties. Tried to negotiate an access easement through there, weren't successful yet because they just wanted to sell the property, but something for discussion to really enhance access to the property. With that, Commissioners, that's all I have. I'm here for any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
All right, before I bring it back to commission for questions, is there any public comment either in chambers or via Zoom on this item, ladies?
I have no public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions for either staff or the applicant at this time?
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Vice Chair Savilecik.
John did bring this up in his presentation, is access to this site. So, and if this turns into a commercial site, how will the access be granted? Because this map that is shown has the Shell Station, but now there is a fast oil change facility there, and then there's two more signs of commercial properties that are going in there. So how will, how will this be accessible for a commercial site?
So the current access, as I understand it, is based off that 20-foot access easement. That 20-foot access easement was amended when that Jim Boy's Taco and the dispensary came in.
Oh, the dispensary's not on here either, so.
Missed one. But they created a 20-foot access out to the existing exit point of that location. So there is an amended access that I was able to track down through one of the documents.
And these aren't improved access? They're, are they paved or dirt or?
So that, once it gets into the Jim Boy Taco area, all that's paved, it's all improved. However, the adjacent, immediate to the west property is a one-acre, also commercial property that went through a rezone process under the former Reno Stat Corridor Joint Plan. And they still have that existing 20-foot access easement as well.
And then according to this map, there are, in addition to this property, there are three other residents that are there as well, residential properties.
Currently, there's two, two more. So there's one directly to the north, and then there's another one right near the kennel.
Okay.
Then they have access off of Cactus View Drive. And then, as Mr. Krimpodick mentioned, they are working on potentially getting access to the two commercial properties to the south that branch off of Buck Drive.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions?
For staff, you said that allowable residential density under the rezone would be five units per acre, so what's the total change in allowable residential units under the proposal?
So currently, they would be allowed eight dwelling units per, eight dwelling units total on a 2.76-acre site, three dwellings per acre. Doing some rough math, I believe it would be about 13 dwellings under NC. But that would be with approval of a special use permit to allow for that density before they come forward. If it's a single-family residential property, it would also be subject to a tentative subdiction map.
Thank you.
May I ask, is there any further questions at this time? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and call, is there any motions?
Did he have the motion up on for the screen?
Sorry. Commissioner Nelson?
I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as Exhibit A to the staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 21-0004, having made at least three of the five findings required by Washoe County Code Section 110.820.15 per N D. North Valleys Area Plan Policy NV 21.1 and North Valleys Area Plan Policy NV 21.3. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendment in WMPA 21-0004 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson, do we have a second?
This is Rob for the record. I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gussman, should we do them two separately or together, or what would you prefer in this mode?
That's up to the motion maker, what she prefers to do. I have a comment on that, I'm adjourned motion. You can decide to vote on this and then ask for another motion, or either way.
Commissioner Savilecik, you said you had a-
Yes, and this is a question for council. In, on page one of, or page two of our packet, we have the motion for the master plan amendment. And then on page 16, we have the master plan amendment motion. And in the, there's a difference in terms of the policy. It's NV 21-4, point four, and then it's NV 21.3. So there, there's a discrepancy in the motion.
Chris, can you address that?
That's just an oversight. NV 21-4 is for a market analysis, is not a required finding. NV 21-3 is a required finding for the master plan amendment.
So point three is the one for consideration. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for the clarification. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have a first and a second in the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we, then of course, we have a second regulatory zone amendment. Do we have a motion for this one?
I can make that motion, or, okay. I'm going to go off page 18.
Yes, I have two pages.
I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as Exhibit B to this staff report, recommending adoption of Regulatory Zone Amendment Case WRZA 21-0003, having made all of the following findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed Regulatory Zone Amendment in WRZA 21-0003 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Vice Chair Savilecik. Do we have a second in that motion?
Commissioner Phillips, second with the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Moving right along, we are on item nine, chair and commissions' items, item nine A. Does anyone have a future agenda item request at this time? All right, thank you very much. Then moving on to item nine B, requests for information from staff at this time. Okay, hearing none, we'll close item nine. We move on to item 10, directors and legal councils' item. Item nine A, report on previous planning items, Secretary Lloyd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one item to report on. At the August 16th BCC meeting, the County Commission introduced and conducted the first reading of the Highland Village Two, MPA-RZA, and that included the development agreement to reduce the density to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. And it will be heard, the second reading will be heard September 13th.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Ms. Gussman, any legal information updates at this time?
Nothing for me.
Thank you very-
And it will be heard, the second reading will be heard September 13.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Ms. Gusman, any legal information updates at this time?
Nothing for me.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Going riding along, ladies, we're back to public comment, is there any other public comment either in chambers or via Zoom at this time?
Yes, I have Mark Newman.
Good evening again, for the record, Mark Newman. And I was speaking somewhat of the Highland Village second reading coming up, the 13th next week. I'll be there talking to the Commissioners again. As me and all of you up there sitting on the board, we are all volunteers. We're appointed by the Commissioners for our advice and for our best thinking of what the people within each one of our districts and our community wants. And we go through all of this process, and then all of a sudden, it gets changed around because the developer decides to change his mind. And all of the effort that you've put in, I've put in, and other people of our community have put into this development to make it what we want. And it's not just Highland Village, it's all over through our Washoe County. And 1,000 feet, I don't know where all of you live, nor do I care to know, but if you're the only lot out there at 1,000 feet, and you're just beyond that 1,000 feet, nobody gets a notice. At one time, the Citizens Advisory Boards used to actually meet with the contractors and go over, and we'd have a community meeting of everybody within that community, and that has been changed. We need to do something about that, because now the Citizens Advisory Board literally has nothing to do with it. And just like the gentlemen that were here earlier, they notified everybody 1,000 feet to meet at this school. Well, somebody that lives 1,100 feet from it that may be affected by it has no knowledge of this. So we need to bring it back in to where it goes in and everybody within the community is actually notified of that, just so that they can attend to the Citizens Advisory Board and put in their comment. And as our Citizens Advisory Board, some of them can get pretty wild, we have to let people know that in the same position as I'm sitting up here tonight and all of you, you're volunteering your time up here. Yes, you put in an application, the same as I did, for any other Citizens Advisory Board. And we are appointed by the Commissioners because they hope that we're going to do the best that we can do. But then we give them the information, and they just kind of like decide to do whatever they want. And I don't know if you guys go to any of the Commissioners' meetings or listen to any of the Commissioners' meetings, there are, I'll just say, one of them, or maybe even more, we'd like to see the Citizens Advisory Boards, your board as the planners, just go out the window, because they would just like to make the decision in their own way what they think is going to be best for you and for me, without any of our input at all. We have to work as, as the Citizens Advisory Boards, and I'm attending as many Citizens Advisory Board meetings as I can within Washoe County, and making it aware to everybody that we have to remember to kind of ring in our elected officials, that we elected them, and we are sitting there for the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ladies, is there any further public comment?
No further public comment in chambers.
And no public comment via Zoom.
Thank you, ladies, we close public comment, and we are now on to our last item, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.